Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's common council meeting. Roll call vote please. Sorry, roll call attendance.
Fire?
Here.
Rachel?
Here.
Rosenridge?
Here.
Bargander?
Here.
Wagner? Whitwell?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Searls?
Here.
Buttke?
Here.
Hemler?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, the Tille Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, and in his soul, the liberty of justice for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council. First stating their name and address, the council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll go on to item on number four. Their motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2020 special meeting and August 25th, uh, 2020 meeting. A motion by Mr. Buttke. A second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenridge?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitwell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Searls?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, any staff updates? Steve, please.
Just one very short one. Normally in October, we have the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference that many of you go to. We schedule for lacrosse this year. They'll be holding it virtually this year. And I think Amy Krogman sent out a note to you a couple of weeks ago. She needs to know by next Wednesday, the 16th, how many of you would like to participate in the virtual conference that will be held in early October. So if you're interested at all, there's some good sessions coming up. Let her know by a week from tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other staff updates? Uh, nope. All right. Item F, mayor's comments. Play recognition of Sam Fox with the police department, 15 years. Uh, and I just wanted to give recognition to, I think you all got the email that Dan Connect sent out about the Adler Road Trail Project. We're getting a grant for $365,000. And Dan, just a great job. He recognized everybody involved with that in the summer here. Uh, Tom Turchi, Tim Cassidy, Justin Casperson, Josh Miller, and Bryce Hembrook. And so I would just like to thank all the city staff that input that for all the great work that you do and continue to do. Thank you very much for that. That really does help a lot. Uh, that's it for me. Item G, any council comments? Comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll go to item H. Any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? No report, all right. Item I, uh, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to please and place in file recommending approval of all actions in the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Eschel, second by Mr. Wagner. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenridge?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitwell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Searls?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That carries. Uh, item K, uh, present candidate for position on the Marshfield Utility Commission. Presented by myself, and you have in your packet a, um, a letter there from Paul Kaplan, who's been on the commission for some years, done a great job in looking to get reappointed. So there's no action tonight, um, required. And I don't think there's anything urgent, is there? That would require anything. So this will be on the September 22nd meeting, unless you have any other, any questions. Seeing none, we will move on to item L. Discussion, discussion, bond rating, budget update, and next steps presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
Thank you. Presented last Tuesday, the results of the Moody's credit letter. I did dig out a little more additional information, but kind of wanted to recap for the council also and talk about the budget process and where we're at. You know, luckily, we're at some historically low interest rates. And I had sent out the email that, you know, we had planned at 1.9%. The bonds came in at 1.25%, which saved us quite a bit of money.
Ron, can you hold on just one second? Can you guys work on that feedback?
There you go. All right. Thanks, guys. So we had planned at 1.9, uh, came in at 1.25, you know, uh, and that's after we were downgraded and then negative outlook. You know, so we are still paying more than we should. So the rule of thumb is the difference between our current rating and the double A rating we need to get back to is about 25 basis points. So as much as we saved, double A issuers are getting 1%. So to kind of translate that, we will pay about $150,000 over life of the bond more than we would have. Um, still a great rate and a great outcome. All right. And so kind of look through the Moody's rating letter. They give two main reasons for the negative outlook. One, structural deficit in the debt service fund that we were well aware of. Uh, you know, we under-leaved for the better part of a decade, and we're still feeling the effects of that because we haven't caught up levy-wise to our actual. And the second one they give is continuing narrowing of the city's liquidity. So that's a nice way of saying we're deficit spending and burning through cash, obviously, that we don't want to do. In your packet, it put the, uh, the historical tax levy rates and the tit transfers. You've seen that many times before. You know, what kind of sticks out is I went back through it again. The last year, we truly paid our debt service in full, you know, with no deficit, no tit transfers. It was either 2009 or 2013, depending on you look at gross or net. So it's been a while. And if you recall, you know, what really saved our bacon there was we had the ability to recover lost interest on the advances to the tids. Uh, you know, to the tune of $2.5 million. So if you look through the credit strengths, you know, the, the one upside is we finally convinced them that our kids are doing well. So they actually list it as a strength now, whereas it used to be a credit weakness. Um, so they're seeing that. If you skip to the section where they really talk about it is in the financial operations reserve sections. So in fiscal 2019, the debt service fund had a deficit fund balance of $1 million. So at the next meeting, we'll have a budget resolution, uh, to move that to the general fund. Uh, that's just for the amount through 2019, uh, before any 20 or 21 deficit. And then they say, you know, since the outstanding debt is GO, the city is able to levy an amount sufficient to cover all the debt service. Presently is uncertain if the city council would approve such a plan. So if you remember how our levy limits work, the general fund is very, very restricted. You know, we can only inch it up little by little, but we can levy for our actual debt. So, um, what they're saying there is, you know, it's politically, they say, what is your political will to do this? We have the ability to levy our debt in full. We can only inch up the general fund, but since we have this hole in our debt service fund, we can levy for all our outstanding debt payments. That's where we're short. Um, and they say without increased levy or budgetary action, uh, dot, 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 we will downgrade you again. You know, if you read between the lines. Uh, they mentioned our five-year plan, and again, that's only as good as our actions. Um, let's see here. Try not to recover too many things because you've seen that, that grid I put together. You know, one part that we did do for the Moody's prep is if you take the 2013 rate and just add 2% a year, it's actually pretty close to what we should be at currently. Uh, so where are we at in the budget process? The way we do it is we kind of start out with just kind of some broad planning assumptions. So we plan on 2% growth, uh, 2% general fund expense increase, which we're hoping to get down a little bit. We've been saying 2.5%, but our health insurance is coming in a little bit better, and we're trying to whittle away that as little as possible. Um, 1% other revenue, which may be optimistic, uh, and then we kind of hold the levy equal till we see, um, what we have. So one thing we know for sure is we'll have a $1.1 million deficit again in the debt, in the debt service fund. Um, that's last year's levy, this year's actual payments. And that's a hard one. Uh, we can't refinance it. We can't move it. We can't defer it. But those are checks we have to cut in 2021. So that, we will definitely have a deficit, you know, we can calculate that down to the penny right now. And that'll be an annual deficit. And that's what Moody's is talking about. It's a structural annual deficit. You know, for past spending, you know, projects that are done years ago, and we're still, you know, short on the debt service side. So that kind of obviously puts us in a tough situation there. General fund, like I said, is looking like we can come up with a, a moderate increase. You know, if we really kind of stick to our guns on that part of it. So things that'll help or not help, you know, usually you have kind of a revenue increase, expense reduction proposition. But it's not the case in the debt service fund because the general fund is also out of deficit. So we can't, we'd have to reduce quite a bit to even get the general fund back to balance before we'd even have any dollars that we could use for debt service. And what also comes up quite a bit is dollars versus rates. So this is a rate issue, you know? Uh, our rates got out of whack at one point. So dollars help, but they don't fix the problem unless they're every year. So if someone would donate $100,000, we grab $100,000 out of a different fund. That's nice. You know, we get a little extra cash, a little more time, but it doesn't fix the structural deficit. It doesn't narrow the gap at all. So what we're planning on bringing back on the 1022 meeting, I will have the budget resolution for a million dollars of the general fund fund balance. And then part one will be the debt service deficit. You know, that's truly a, a levy increase or not. Just a discussion, you know? General fund, we have some more options, you know? I didn't hear any interest at all, but I'll still recap your alternate revenue sources, uh, and maybe just to tell you which ones are even logistically possible. Uh, and then we'll try to provide as much as we can, uh, for descriptive statistics on a general fund, you know, FDEs, trends, and the tough part about that is when we look at reductions in general fund, you know, it's our key services, police, fire, streets, parks, 71% of our general fund. Um, so then we'll have two, I'll have two things that we'll need to know before we, um, finalize the first draft of the budget. One, where we stand on the non-governmental organization funding. You know, I'll recommend that we suspend that for a year till we balance. Uh, and the second thing, you know, because this is all debt service related, I'll put it on the agenda and request that we push back the 17th street project a year again because we want to keep our, our debt down. Uh, you know, if we're going to be in this hole for an extended period. So that's kind of what I had. Any questions on Moody's, you know, budget? We'll have a lot more information at the next meeting, but fire away.
Mr. Buttke?
Ron, uh, I need, I, if you could give me a projection when we get out of the mess we're in, uh, when do you see, we have a couple potential big projects coming. Uh, police department, uh, city garage possibly. How many years do you think? What's your projection? I'm not trying to hold you to it.
Sure. Sure. You know, I'll answer it this way, you know? Once we get back to even, you know, I'm pretty conservative. I don't believe in big increases, big borrowing. Once we get our, our balance back at square one, what I would like to recommend is that we have a general fund that doesn't increase more than 2% to 2.5% a year. And then we have a little growth that'll kind of narrow any levy. And then on the debt side, that we only borrow what we paid off in the previous year minus X. So we're kind of in this, uh, I don't want to say savings mode, but we're reducing our debt and we're trying to save up for what that project is. But we can't even really talk about it till we get back to paying our debt in the first place. But at the same time, I think it's important to do the planning, you know, and the site reviews and all those kinds of things.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ron, I took your, your presentation at finance under consideration, but there were some things that were confusing me, especially you, you mentioned that our debt service for this year for 2020 was something over $4 million and we only budgeted $3 million and something. And so there's, that's where the million dollar has to be done. But this, this is your, your page from the budget book last year. This is the budget that was presented and it says that the debt service fund budget included $3,537,646 in revenues, $3,212,000 of that came from tax levy, 278 from fund balance, 25,000 reimbursement for the fairgrounds, 22,000 from premium available. So that, that came up to the total of 3,537,646. This is what you told us we needed. How can we possibly have budgeted less than what you told us we needed?
Well, a couple of things. So what I'm saying now is what we do is we take last year's levy amount of debt service, which is the 3.5 million.
Right.
And we compare it to what our 2021 payments are. So we're starting with last year's revenue and we look at our 2021 payments we will need. And that's where the deficit of 2021 will be before any levy increase. And from what you said too, remember $278,000 for unbalanced plight is not a revenue, it's just.
It's just a transfer.
It's, it's nothing. It's a unfunded expenditure.
And I still, it was, how are we picking up? How are we picking up that extra million in, a million one in, in need? Are you saying that's because of what we've borrowed this year to date and that's what's going to increase the borrowing for next year like that?
Sure, so.
So but don't, don't we have the opportunity to levy for that as the budget comes up?
Yes, so, so a couple of things. So think, remember, we have about 14 different bond issues outstanding. So when I say what the, the number is in 2021, it's our actual payments due in 2021. And that number has increased over 2020 for a couple of reasons. A little more spending, but again, we're trying to flatten off our debt because before we had ailers, if you look at our debt payments, there'd be million dollar swings. So we're flattening it out. So we do have a little more short term, you know, one to three year debt. Because previously it looked like the practice was to backload it like crazy. So we're trying to flatten it out. So it's a function of overall increased debt, a little bit of smoothing, and then our, our levy being set to last year. But I mean, I, you can, we can pull up the schedule, but our actual debt payments are $4.3 million.
My, my, my instinct is to argue with you, but I've not, I have nowhere near the expertise that you do. So I'm going to have to trust you on this one, but I'll tell you, it, it really, to be faced with this year after year, and I wasn't on the council last year when this happened. And how the, you know, I, I don't think you can blame the council or the mayor or anybody for doing what they were told to do, they, by looking at the sheet in the budget and saying, yeah, that's what we got to do, that's what it'll be. So somehow or another, I think we need warnings, you know, red flags or something, maybe this is a red flag, maybe from here on out, the budget request will be, well, you need this much to cover the debt that you've already got and you're going to, and for the year after that, you're going to have to put another 300,000, 400,000, a million, whatever in. Maybe that's what you got to do. But this, there's no way this council would have, could have anticipated that. No way the previous council had anticipated that. So we're going to have to educate ourselves a little better, I think.
Sure, and you know, maybe if, you know, we can pull it out because it's in all the information that it always puts out. When they do the five year plan, it's in the official statement, it's in there. But what you're describing exactly is a structural deficit. You know, we had all those years and now it's kind of coming to roost where we're short but didn't know it.
Ron, can I ask you just a couple of questions here? So I'm looking back on the, one of the sheets he had in there and the summary of the city levy. It tells a very interesting story. Back in 2011, there was a 9.1% reduction, but it looks like there was just some kind of reevaluation that took place. But between 2010 and 2020, it looks like the, the amount of increase that we took in in revenue or tax levy was at about 6.5% roughly. And I believe that our expenses went up close to 10 to 12%. So I mean, they're in, so this is why I really don't understand for all those years, how we didn't go with some kind of small increase. Because the numbers are just so clear that we needed it. I just want to make sure that we've got, that we're really taking a look at things closer so that that doesn't continue to happen because that just cannot go on.
Yeah, you know, that's, well, you know, there's a lot of different, I totally agree. You know, like I said, if we would have taken 2013, 2% a year, we're in good shape. You know, there are additional things going on that need a little deeper analysis. You know, when you look at general fund expenses, keep in mind that our city and every city has pulled everything they can of the general fund over the last, you know, six to eight years. You know, every piece of equipment, we try to move to a capital outlay fund, so it's not counting against our general fund. But I think your point is valid is we should, you know, pay for what we, what we buy.
Well, I think it's very, very clear here, the CPI went up, but you have there just over 13%. Our expenses went up, let's just say 11%, but we only increased the levy by 6.4%. So we can't be surprised that this is here. So that's stage one of what I'm going to go, and I'm going to flip the coin and go to the other place.
Sure.
With COVID and everything, I think the citizens have had it. So they're not really looking for a tax increase. But I know Moody's, when we spoke the other day, they wanted it, they wanted this fixed in a couple of years to see if, you know, the council and everybody has the appetite to it. But in your evaluation here, it has, in the summary, it says that they want to see our debt service fund over the next few years, which gives us three years, I think, so that our Moody's rating doesn't continue to go down, even though they are trending negative. If we give them a, okay, look, this is where we're going to go. This, this is the plan. Obviously, different councils can change it years down the road, but will that be enough to, to help them stay with our rating where it is?
Sure. This is just my opinion, you know, of course, the word, the term few years is kind of, kind of broad saying, okay, you're working on it, we know you're working on it. In my opinion, two years max, one year is better to fund our debt service. You know, we've got this chronic history of not paying our debts. We, we've underpriced our product, you know, for lack of a better phrase, for, for better part of a decade. You know, we're in the middle of pandemic, we're not in a good financial position to, you know, absorb any bad news, you know? So I would push that we fix it. We have a legitimate reason, what, what we're fixing, I'd say one year, two years max.
And I get that, I'm with you, I know it needs to be fixed. The other side of this is, is we go out to the public with the people. COVID is really, it's affected everybody. And I'm just thinking the last thing that could be, I mean, none of us has ever done this during a pandemic before and Moody's, I don't know, maybe they have, I don't know, but there's the real side of this is of just how much can we slap the public with? I'm just not a big fan of that. So I'm hoping we can, we'll be able to work something out better.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, you know, I think I've said all along, you've got a slew of unpopular choices to make. And right now it's raise the levy, so we're paying our debt, or, you know, look at, you know, further duration in our financial situation, probably another downgrade. I mean, those are our two choices on the debt side. You know, we as staff and administration, we can do everything we can on the general fund side, you know, limit increases, put stuff off, limit our borrowing, which we'll recommend, but the debt service part is down to those two choices.
Right. Other questions, comments from the council? Mr. Whitson.
Taxes are going to go up. The school district is looking at a referendum that's going to cause taxes to go up unless for some reason it fails. So taxes are going to go up. How much up is going to depend on what we decide to do. The unfortunate thing is that when taxes go up, the city's blamed. We're not the biggest taxing entity in that property tax bill. But when taxes go up, it's the city's fault because the city sends out the bill and the populace sees that the city's tax has gone up. So we're going to get the heat, whether we increase taxes or not, we're going to get the heat. It's unfortunate this is all happening during a pandemic with everything else happening in our community, but unfortunately, I think the piper is here and we're going to have to pay and I don't like that, I really, and then you start talking alternate funding sources, like I said at finance. Alternate funding source, AKA in most people's mind is more tax. So I don't care what you call it, it's an increase. It's going to be an ugly situation for the next couple of months, I think.
Other comments from the council? Rebecca, did I see your hand up or? No, okay, all right. Mr. Henler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since, Ron, we're looking for dollars, have you ever considered looking for dollars from our subsidiaries like the utility?
Well, so between, utility does pay us a dividend and, you know, pays into our EDB. For our enterprise funds, the, what we started to is we now charge administrative expenses to EMS and our wastewater. And off the top of my head, that's about $175,000 a year. We charge administrative time to our TIDS, you know, based on time tracking. We're splitting legal bills, so we're, we are recouping, I think, at a much better rate than we used to.
How much do you think we're recouping through that process?
I would say, you know, obviously the utility dividend in the, is about $2 million, give or take. The amount we added for administrative charges to TIDS, EMS and wastewater is a little over $200,000 every year.
So you feel comfortable with that amount?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a, I don't want to say arbitrary, but it's an allocation process. I think the amounts we came up, we can support and are fair without, you know, gouging.
Well, given the times that we're going through, I think gouging would be appropriate. Sorry.
That's okay. No.
Other comments, questions from the council? Seeing none, all right. Thank you very much, Ron. Item M, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, possible litigation with Walmart, and closed session under Wisconsin statute, chapter 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, a renewal of agreement with the city and CWS staff, their motion to go into closed session. Motion by Mr. Butke is second by Mr. Rosenditch. Roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenditch?
Yes.
Argander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Bierl?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler.
Thank you very much. We are in closed session. Thank you very much. We are in closed session.
All right, would you, um, would you read the, um, action?
There is none.
Mayor, I need somebody to make a motion. I don't know what they want to do.
Okay. Is anyone, Mr. Bettke?
I'll make a motion to go to a one-year agreement with the fair with an option for two additional years.
As second by Mr. Fisher, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Fire?
No.
Rebel.
Tashel?
Yes.
Rosenridge?
Yes.
Argander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Bettke?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries, uh, nine to one. Uh, any, uh, item P, any suggested items for future agendas? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Um, I would like to have a future agenda item where we can, uh, discuss the con- the new contract with Von Briesen and get an update on their billing.
Fair enough. Any, um, any other suggestions? Oh my God. Um, Mrs. Burrows.
Yeah, due to, um, multiple questions from residents of, um, of the city of Marshfield, an effort to maintain transpor- transparency, I'm going to request that the city administration provide an update to the common council on a pending investigation regarding Mayor McManus, specifically who made the allegations, what the allegations are, and who is conducting the investigation and where they are in that process. Um, I know it for myself, I've been getting a lot of questions. Um, people are beginning not to believe that we don't know anything. And, um, due to transparency, I think it's essential that the common council is no longer kept in the dark.
Thank you. Anything further? Uh, seeing none then, is there a, uh, motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Whitzel, second by Mr. Henler. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.